Go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council from Monday, February 15th at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does council have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I want to go to city clerk Thompson first. Staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have two amendment and a deletion. The deletion would be of the hearing. I'd like to cancel that hearing as the invoice has been paid. And also, I would like to move agenda item number 10 to after agenda item 17, as we're waiting for someone to show up. They're running a little late.
Okay, sounds great. With that request from staff, I would entertain a motion for those two items, removing item number nine, moving on item number 10 to in between 17 and 18.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
Tonight's consent agenda will be for council's approval, the city council minutes of November 1st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of November 8th, planning commission minutes of October 13th, accounts payable report for October 28th through November 10th, miscellaneous finance reports, and for council's acceptance, the building report for the month of October.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Approve the consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Anybody here for the open forum, staff?
No, there's no one that's signed up.
Okay, next we'll go to item number 10, which is consider project funding and approval for downtown, I'm sorry, number 11, consideration of amendment one to the 2022 Improvement Project Professional Services Agreement with Bolton and Mink. Welcome back from deer hunting.
I don't know if I'd call it deer hunting.
It looked like you were cutting trees, at least.
We had a good week, so it's always good to get home safe.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
You just take one pass.
Yep, sure can.
Just kind of want to explain something before we go through with this first consideration, this adoption of this resolution. This is kind of the layout for the design and engineering on our projects for scope for 2022. And the scope, the projects that we had listed there are in the left, and it kind of talks about whether they're mill overlay and construction. And the reason for this change was that initially, when we signed the agreement with Bolton and Mink, it was just for the Sixth Street project and the 13th Street project. And since then, our engineering staff has changed, and we were counting on our engineering staff that we had on staff at that time to handle these other projects. But that's changed dramatically, so we're coming to you with these projects. And what I want to explain this a little bit, and Jared can speak to me if I explain this wrong, but basically where we're at right now would be the preliminary design, and with that comes the cost estimate of the project. It's just an estimate of the projects, not the actual dollars. And then after we get that part, it comes to council with those numbers and what those projects, estimate projects would look like. We go to the next step. If council would approve to move forward with four out of the six projects or whatever, then we would design those projects and then move forward with the bidding. But each time, it comes back to the council on each step. And just be aware that if we do decide to design a project, and then that project, for what point we come through with the bidding, comes in higher or out of our budget, we still have that project designed and on the shelf for the next year. So it's not really wasted effort. So that's kind of what I wanted to explain, and I don't know if I got that wrapped up. But that's, and I got to honestly tell you, this is a new area for me, too, so I'm learning along with everybody else here on some of this. So with that, I will present the consider the adoption resolution authorizing amendment number one to the 2022 Improvement Project Professional Services Agreement with Bolton and Mink in the amount of $842,185. And I would, so.
Okay, so first motion for us to consider, here is an amendment, the 2022 Improvement Project Professional Services Agreement with Bolton and Mink. Is there a council that wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Osmus, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I think Mr. Manzer probably answered my question already, but I know when we were talking about streets, we've had, or at least I've been in a couple of conversations about the parking lots.
Yep.
And holding on the parking lots to be able to use those funds to do triage, whether it be something different. But I believe you explained that even if we decided not to do the parking lots, what was done so far would be, or are we committing?
Correct.
We're not committing. This is our.
We're not committing to the whole amount, it's just, it's kind of like a section at a time type of thing.
Yeah.
And work that's done now is work that we retain. If we decide to move it forward next year, we start on step three, or wherever we end up dropping the project out.
So this is committing to spend $103,000 to design the parking lots, or have we already designed them?
No, this would be the preliminary design. So with, this would basically give you a cost estimate, what it would cost to do the parking lot. So for instance, if the, I'm just going to pull a number out of the sky, but this is going to tell you that, well, that parking lot's going to cost you $500,000. The estimate is that that parking lot's going to be $500,000, that one's going to be $300,000, and that one's going to be a million. And now, here's what we got, a million five, or whatever it is, for parking lots, and now it comes to you and say, yeah, we want to move forward, or no, we don't want to do it, we would stop there. But right now, we're kind of throwing a dart at the board as far as what those costs are. And I think the last time we talked about this, we looked at this whole thing, this whole engineering costs, and I think there was some misconception that we're committed to the whole end, where it's, as we keep moving projects forward, so, you know, once we get to the spot, and let's take the parking lots out, and once you get to the streets, there's probably more streets in there than we'll have money to do. But whatever work we have done there, we will have for the next, you know, if we move it into 2022, or 2023. So that's, I think, that's kind of it, so.
Seeing and hearing nothing else from council, I want to commend you, Mr. Manzer. I know you've worked really hard on this project and with Jared as well. This is, as you've said a number of times tonight already, this is new land for a lot of us, and probably all of us, and probably it's the most new land for you.
Yeah.
Because this is pretty steep learning curve, and you're doing a fabulous job. I really commend you for the work that you've done. And, you know, we've got the three steps here, if we choose to pull out at any of those steps, we certainly can do that. But, you know, staff is recommending these projects, they went through the scoring system of what staff did and what we've asked them to do. But what I really am pleased of is how early we are getting this information. So this is really good, and hopefully we get them bids out on the street earlier this year, so.
Well.
Thank you for your staff and the work that they've done, I really do appreciate it.
And that's kind of one of the things that I've learned stepping into this process, that communication is a key component with our residents, and getting the ball rolling ahead. And so that was kind of a goal that we made as a group, working on is that we wanted to get the bull, we wanted to get things rolling and keep rolling, so that we're ahead of the curve instead of behind it. So hopefully, we can accomplish that.
Okay, councilmember O'Brien.
Did you work with municipal utilities on any of this?
Yes, they're aware of, so actually, to be honest with you, a lot of these street reconstructions are, were spurred by municipal utilities. And so what we'll do is, we're forwarding all the information after tonight forward to them, so they can make further comments on what we've got kind of laid out for. Yep, so I'm in contact with Allenir about the water, that sort of thing. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Thank you again, Gary. Next, we have a consideration of a change order, number one, for Robins Island Improvements with Torsia Construction. Again, Mr. Manzer.
Pitch hitting for Rob the night, so. But I'm aware of the project, so I'm bringing before you the approval of change orders for Robins Island project in the amount of $31,083.49. And this is the Robins Island Improvement Project that requires some change orders to add stoops and doors, doors at open number one, stoops at Hilltop and walking path from open number two. And all this is in compliance with the building officials' requests.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to consider approval of change order number one for Robins Island Improvements with Torsia Construction. Council discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, did we have an architect for these shelters, or was it the construction manager, or who didn't know that the doors have to open outward instead of inward?
I guess I can't answer, I know it was designed to replicate what was there before, that was what the instructions were given. And after it went through the, the building department, that's where the change came about at that point. I honestly can't see, it looks like it might have been a firm, Anderson Johnson Associates might have designed this stuff. I honestly can't answer that, Rick, for you 100%.
Because it's been that way for years.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't believe a professional designer wouldn't know that.
Yeah, I really can't speak to that. But I know that there was a couple of things, I think one, I think there was a door issue that we had, had, we had to change something because of the size of the overhead door, so we could get our machine in there to move stuff around. So I know that was one of the changes, but that had nothing to do with the way the doors opened and stuff.
Was there something with handles?
Well, yeah, because the other thing was the square footage, when they talked about the capacity, according to the building officials, that the way, my understanding was that they take the whole square footage and consider people that would be standing in there, and that that number was bigger than what they initially thought it would be. And I don't know where those thresholds are, as far as what the number of people is, that that changes what the requirements are with the doors and stuff. But I think that that was part of it, too, that that square footage actually brought that threshold up higher, so that required different types of crash bars and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I remember correctly, there were some things that were listed as alternatives on it. These are not the alternatives, like to provide seating around the posts or those types of things, this is something.
Yeah, these are building change orders. And I think there were some soil corrections that had to be done because of the soil there, where they had to use those, those polygon piers that they drive in. I don't want to say pylons, but polygon piers. And I think that that, you know, for the initial soil samples, and then when they started driving those down, and I think they, I don't know if they based it off of resistance, you know, but they went a lot more than what they had anticipated with the prior, with the pre-construction soil borings.
Councilmember Nelson.
Does this put us at our maximum? I'm sorry, I should have found that on here, I didn't see that.
No, that still keeps us within the scope of the project as far as change orders, and I think, let's see, if I can find it here.
I was just hoping we had some room for some of those contingencies.
Yeah, I think, if I remember right, I seen where it was like at the end, I want to say it was like $149,000 extra.
Okay, thank you.
It should say extra, but leftover. Nothing's extra.
Additional comments or questions from council?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osmus.
As long as we have you on the hot spot.
Yeah.
Then the other question was on the orientation of it, and having to get moved, and having, and maybe that's coming up on another one, but if we're talking about, I think it was on shelter number one, they had to move it, and so we had to pay for a new redesign and...
Yeah, I think, I don't know if that's addressed, I know that there was a reason that had movement, I don't know if that had to do with the soil borings or what it was. I think that that was a real issue to get solid foundation for that, those polygon piers. Can never forget that, polygon piers.
Additional comments or questions, staff? Okay, I'm looking for some clarification. We did not use a construction manager at risk here, did we?
I can't answer that question, no.
Okay. And so, was the engineering done internally then, or, okay, so we had a firm come in? Okay. So we had a firm come in to do the, to do the engineering, but the way this looks to me, these are all code requirements, pretty much?
Yep.
So, so that really would not have been done until after the, you know, the building official knew what was happening.
Exactly, yep.
So we have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve the change order number one for Robins Island Improvements with Torsia Construction in the amount of $31,083.49. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, a consideration of amendment number two for Robins Island Invest in Wilmer Project Engineering Services with Bolton and Mink. Again, Mr. Manzer.
Last one for me, I hope.
Well, we're not going to let you off that easy.
This is considered a resolution authorized amendment number two for the amount of $49,445 to Bolton and Mink for the, in the contract for Robins Island Invest in Wilmer project. And this basically is the engineering portions of all these things we just talked about. And I have an expert here if you need to answer any more detailed questions than that.
Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, motion by Plowman, seconded by Ask, to consider amendment number two for Robins Island Invest in Wilmer Project Engineering Services Bolton and Mink. Questions from council. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the glaring question to me would be, when we see the term redesign, that emphasizes the fact that it was redesigned. So just looking for clarification, what needed to be redesigned and why? And does that mean that our first design was not usable, and why?
Well, I think it had to do with the footings, being that you, you changed the stoops, so now you changed the footing design of the buildings, because you, those stoops have to be on a frost-free footing as well. I think that's part of it.
You're right behind you.
Help me out here. I think, that's what it is, I think, in a nutshell. And, and, I don't know, did that have anything to do with the modification of the building layout as far as the orientation?
Sure. So, good evening, mayor, council. Specifically to councilmember Plowman's question, originally, as the project was going through its stage with the subcommittee associated with Robins Island, the shelters that were contemplated were slab-on-grade, as the shelters existed prior to the project, or what the old ones were. When the building official reviewed the project in consultation with the fire chief, it was determined that because of the size of the interior spaces, although they were contemplated for picnic tables and the like, it was indicated that people could still be standing in those spaces. And as a result, the occupancy rating was modified, which required foundations and stoops associated with that, along with the hard door hardware and everything else. So that was the, ultimately, the changes associated with those buildings. Slab-on-grade contemplated, full foundations is what's out there now.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Then, well, seems like more structural, more structural elements were added, so therefore, this, the structure should be beefier, should be, should be, have more structural integrity, a better built building.
I'm completely confident of the design life of those structures, yes. Yep.
Can I make a, I just want to make a quick comment, because I got quite a bit of history with that. Those slab-on-grades were stuff that was installed by the staff of the city of Wilmer, and especially the open number shelter, open one, where the soils were less than desirable, those also had no doors or windows on them either. So you put a structure on there where you're going to try to have doors and windows, and you don't have a good foundation, you don't have a, you know, good working, so, just FYI type thing.
Councilmember Osmus.
Don't leave yet.
Okay.
Okay. This is, this is, this is again above and beyond what we're doing here, but just, we're on shelter number one.
Yeah.
Is there a reason that the siding hasn't gone on yet? It seems like it's been weeks with the...
I honestly couldn't answer that. Julie Kirk kind of runs that, and I know he's on top of it. I just, I know there's been some issues with some supplies, supply chain, and I don't know that that's one of them.
Right.
And I know that the, Kurt's really been working on the electrical side of it, he's been trying to prod them, that's probably, if there's been a part of it that's been a little bit frustrating, it's been the electrical part of it, and, you know, we're up to what, next week, they want to light the lights up. And I think that all the outlets are, but we're kind of hoping to have the lights up, so I think a lot of that's going to happen this week, but, yeah, as far as, I could get that answer for you if you're wondering, too.
If there was, if it was a supply thing, or...
I can ask Kurt, and I can just send an email to the council, just give you an update of where we're at, or whatever.
And I did swing through there, I think last week, and the Gurry Shelter?
Yeah.
That is going to be nice.
Yeah, I think.
I like how the interior turned out, Kurt gave me a little tour.
Yeah, that was, that was a good choice to keep that and turn that around. It's, to be honest with you, that would be probably one of the most used shelters out there now. So, it's got a lot of good things going on out there, you guys are going to be proud of yourselves for getting it to where it's at, it's really good.
By the way, councilmember Nelson.
I'm just referencing first, our first council action request form, lists change order one, two, three, and four, but we only voted on one, so I'm just clarifying the other three.
She should finish.
Yeah, I know, it's a different one than this one, so.
Well, this is the street one?
No, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay, all right.
Let's, we got a motion on the table here.
It was on the one.
We're going to, we're going to have to go backwards here.
Okay, okay.
Leslie, can you start looking at that, please? I'm sorry, city administrator and city attorney. So, kind of what I heard being said is that we're going from basically buildings that will maybe last 20, 25 years, to buildings that could be 30, 50-year buildings, because we put the footings in. So that's an investment in our future. That's, that's good, that's good work, that's, that's a good catch, so. Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded to consider an amendment for Robins Island Invest in Wilmer Project Engineering Services with Bolton and Mink. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Ms. Valiant, on the change orders, they have change order number one through change order number five, number four, and we only voted on change order number one.
Correct, and that's because the other change orders fit into our realm of approval as far as department heads. So that's why change order two, three, and four were already approved. And they were already done, the polygon piers and all that needed to be approved for the shelter number two. That's my, because I recall that Rob had asked me about these, and that's what had happened. And then the code enforcement ones were over the allowable for department head changes. And this...
Normally, in the past, any change orders on a project that exceeded the total valuation, we'd come back to council, so.
We're not over the total valuation yet.
We're not over the total amount that was approved by council?
No, we still have a budget yet, under the contingencies of $149,000.
Okay, okay.
You're not over that.
So then we will get a close-up at the end?
Yep, yeah, you should, right now, you have that, the, you have this sheet here, it shows $149,000. We still have funds yet for this project, at $149,000 for Robins Island. Total loss funds allocated were $3 million. We're at 2.8.
Okay, thank you. Clarify the questions that were being asked over here? Okay. Next, we have change order number one for project number 2101A, Second Street Reconstruction. And again, I'll go to, I'll go to Mr., to Jared.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. Before you, this evening is change order number one for the Second Street Improvement Project. Ultimately, what this change order consists of is the installation of an outside drop on a sanitary sewer manhole. And that outside drop, essentially what that is, is there's a pipe coming in about five feet above the lower pipe in the manhole, and that needed to be added to that, that manhole. So that's what the $9,000 in the change order is for. And then the, the second thing that this change order does is it adjusts the final completion dates on the contract. So it moves it from a completion date of 2023, or of 2022 to 2023. With that, mayor, council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so what we're doing here is what Jared just stated, so we're approving a change order number one for project number 2101A. And I'm sure all of you are getting as many phone calls on Second Street as I am. They're not quite daily anymore, but they're very frequent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Plowman, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bogey, maybe you could just elaborate, the $9,000 change order, that seems like a pretty straightforward item. But the completion date change, that's what's going to have people asking questions, moving from 2022 to 2023, that's almost a 10, 11-month span. Why?
So essentially, as the project was initiated, there were some additional small utilities, gas mains, MUC moved some electrical wires to facilitate that project to be constructed. That did take some time. I believe the gas main was relocated in approximately September, so at which point the contractor initiated work. Originally, that project was supposed to be complete, I believe, in June of next year, but with the relocation of utilities and the delay in the start of construction, ultimately, that's what, what is making this change evident. And the change order, ultimately, if the change order is not approved, then the contractor essentially would be in violation of their, their contract. But discussions with the contractor as the project was initiated, and as they've been trying to work and do as much as possible this year, following those utility relocations, they... they've been, I think they've been workable, and I support the, the change in contract timing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for just a little bit more substance to that, because I guess I can understand the, I can understand the delays, the delays make sense, and, and so that pushes everything back, but this, but pushing it back, and I can see pushing it back in additional season, construction season, but pushing it back a construction season and a half seems to not make much sense to me. Is there something I'm not understanding?
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate those clarifying comments, because ultimately, what the change order is doing is it's moving substantial completion to August of 2022, which is essentially a few more months, but that 2023 date that I referenced would be the date where the final lift of asphalt goes on. So, new completion date, August next year, final completion, when that final layer of asphalt goes on, is 2023.
Okay, and the original completion date was?
June 2022.
Okay, so that, so we're pushing that by like a month and a half?
Right.
Essentially?
Essentially.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, council, the council wished, council could say, put the final lift on, but our policy has been to wait a freeze cycle. So, and we found a lot of problems with waiting that freeze cycle. I mean, if we wanted to push it, but then just understand, I mean, you're going to have to open the street back up. And then, you know, we don't, we don't, you know, like Rob has told us before, we don't want those cold patches.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not indicating that I'm in favor of that, I'm just trying to get the, the timeline and the first course of asphalt versus both courses of asphalt and signed off and completed, make sure we're delineating properly between the two of those.
Perfect, perfect. I was just wanting to say there is an option, the council does have an option.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Jared.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the question that I asked you before with that, and I think it would be good for the full council to understand what's going to happen there over the winter. If I understand correctly, only half of this, not even half, but, so the north half has not, they've not been down underground yet to do things, the curb's still there, et cetera. You're finishing the part that was dug up, what kind of problems might there be over the winter with the new and the old coming together? And then what is the plan for the usage of the street over the winter? Will it strictly be residents, or will it be open? I know there's already been some Facebook posts about people roading on it and those types of things, and then the cross streets, would you please share that information?
Yes, absolutely. So ultimately, the update for the project is, as councilmember Nelson indicated, the utilities, sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer on the south end of the project have been installed. They've made temporary connections to the old existing utilities that are still in place, so all the utilities right now are functioning properly. Next year, when they come in and finish the utilities, they'll hook onto the new ones they installed this year and go all the way north to Becker. As far as the street itself is concerned, it will be gravel over the winter. The contractor, originally staff had been working with the contractor to pave three intersections, and we learned late last week that the contractor's bituminous plant was shut down, so they are not paving any intersections this year, but what they are doing is they're bringing bituminous millings and crushed concrete in. And they've actually been out on site here today, they were working on, on getting that surface leveled with millings, which is a, it's a material that should stand up better in winter. I mean, ideally, ideally it'd been paved, but here's where we're at, and we're trying to make the best with, make do with the best with what we have. So I know the contractor's going to continue to be working in there this week, blading the road, packing it, and, and things of that nature. We've also had conversations with them about, over the course of the winter, recognizing that they did not pave those intersections like we had requested because of their bituminous plant shutting down, that they are going to have some maintenance activities they're going to need to be doing on that street as well, because there will be potholes. The, as far as traffic goes on the street during the winter, we did have a discussion as staff about the barricades that are currently out on the street. Those barricades, we determined those would be removed from the street, it's just going to create way too many issues with snow removal, and, and going around them, damage to personal property if those things get frozen in and a vehicle hits them. So those will be removed. The other item that I will make council aware of is, we were contacted by the post office, and they have requested temporary mailboxes be installed along the project to ensure that residents can get their mail and the postal service can access those mailboxes during the course of the winter. So, similar to other city projects that have occurred, there will be banks of temporary mailboxes along that project area, and as soon as the postmaster determines those locations, we will send a communication out to the residents well in, in advance, so that they're aware of the fact that their mail will now be delivered at a different location than when, where they're used to. Couple other things going on out there, contractor will be making all the driveways ready for winter. Granted, they're, they're not going to be paved and concreted, but at least moved out, big chunks of blacktop or concrete are going to be moved out of the way so that residents don't hit them with their snow blowers. I think that got all your questions.
Just thinking, how are you communicating this to the residents?
Historically, or at least previous to this, with the, with the communications, it's been by letter, via letter. You know, and ultimately, that's one thing that we've talked about a little bit as staff too, for projects moving forward, how, how we do, how we increase our communication with, with residents. And one of the ideas that I'm sure we'll be bringing back to you at, at some point is establishing project websites and things of that nature, so that each project has its own spot where those residents can go to and get that information. And certainly, those can be updated more frequently than mailing a letter via the US Postal Service.
Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Plowman.
Thank you for your hard work on this. I drove on trot today, and it was pretty smooth.
Okay.
Compared to what it was.
Good.
They are working and trying, so hopefully it, it works out this winter.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I echo councilmember Fagerly's comments, it's, thank you, it's not an easy, this type of project's not an easy project to manage, and probably beyond what any of us know. But I think it might be helpful just to take a, a zoom out a little bit, because there's a lot of different information circulating around the community about, well, I guess people naturally go to trying to throw people under the bus, and who is responsible for this and what, and I've seen some crazy, almost conspiracy theory level stuff about what's taking the project so long. Is it safe to say, based on the information that, that I've heard and the questions that we've asked, the majority of the, the problems, the setbacks and the delays, are they derived from old infrastructure and old utilities and, and just the amount of, of change and updating that needed to take place there? Would that be a fair?
Yeah, I definitely think that the vintage of the utilities is, is definitely one of the contributing factors. You know, the, the other part associated with that is some of the, the timing issues of, of relocations. So between the, the utility ages and condition and the timing of, of some relocations, I mean, ultimately, that's where we're at, and that's the reason for why we have a gravel street this winter instead of paved.
Can I follow that? So, safe to say, there's no one entity that dropped the ball?
No.
There's no one contractor, the city, the designer, whatever, there's no, nobody that just decided to not show up for work?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. I just wanted to put that, I mean, I didn't, I'm not of that assumption, I don't think anybody here is, but I think it's good to get that on the public record.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, so we have consideration of change order number one for project number 2101A. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien. Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of change order number one for project number 2101B, Eagle Ridge Drive East Reconstruction. Again, Jared, go ahead.
Alright, good evening again, mayor and council. The item before you this evening is for the Eagle Ridge Drive Reconstruction Project. Three primary components here associated with this change order, the first being, some of the driveways within that location had exposed aggregate concrete, and they requested that they be put back as exposed aggregate concrete. So that's the first item that you see on the, noted in the change order. There was approximately 447 square feet of exposed aggregate concrete. The second one is related to some roadway profile adjustments, that is, how high or how low the road sits. And ultimately, those adjustments were required to better tie into driveways and turf boulevard areas to prevent steep grades or water from pounding behind the curb. So, that's the second component of this, of this change order. And then the third component this evening is related to the catch basin castings, and ultimately, what those are is, as you drive down the street and you see the inlets along the curb and gutter, it's the catch basin, thus, that's what a catch basin casting is, it's where, as the water flows down the curve, curb, it enters into the storm sewer system at those locations. The change here ultimately is that the castings were changed out to meet the city's standards and provide more consistency for the long-term maintenance by maintenance staff, ultimately. They're round to match what the city has, the other ones were rectangular. And that's the third item for the change order. So with that, mayor and council, I answer any questions you might have.
Motion to authorize change order number one, second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize change order number one, councilmember Fagerly, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jared, normally we don't have exposed aggregate for driveway entrances. So, did they ask permission to do that?
Yeah, so actually, the driveways out there that were, a couple of the existing driveways were exposed aggregate to start with. What was proposed to be put back was plain concrete. The residents did approach us and request that their exposed aggregate be replaced with exposed aggregate. So there's a handful of them within, within the subdivision. In addition, there are some residents that did not want their exposes replaced with exposed, and as a result, it's plain, plain concrete.
Were they willing to pay for the extra expense, were they exposed?
They were not, they indicated that's what they had before the project, and that's what they expected when it was done.
Because that property wasn't in the city limits originally, it was annexed in after properties were built, so. Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm surprised that we're, we aren't paying for it. It wasn't an option on Ninth Street when we did it last year. I mean, you got concrete, is what you, you got what the city was giving you, if you didn't want it, you had to do it yourself, is how it was explained to the residents on Ninth Street. So, if this is a precedent, I mean, I, I guess I'm questioning that.
I don't know necessarily that it's a precedent. I've ran in.
I think it's a council decision if it's a precedent or not, I don't think it's a consultant's opinion. If the council feels it's a precedent, then I think the council needs to, let me refer to the city attorney. Does this set a precedent? Mr. Scott?
Mayor, council, I don't think legally it sets a precedent. I think there's a, it's a fairness question, and to be honest, this isn't something that I had been made aware of, so I'm piecing this together as I listen to the discussion. So, to give a more definitive opinion, I'd probably need to work with staff on exactly what the situation is.
Councilmember Nelson.
No, it's, I, I guess I'm surprised, because I know there were people on Ninth Street who refused to let the city do their concrete, because, because they wouldn't do it the way they wanted it done. And I can tell you, there's driveways there now that are half aggregate and half city concrete, because that's how it was done.
I can speak to you about this from my involvement perspective on this, and I got, when I got involved with this, the project was already rolling, and my understanding was that prior staff, through some of the meetings, said that what you got is what you would get back. And I tried to explain to them that the standard is a normal 12 foot or six foot of standard concrete. We even had people that wanted blacktop instead of concrete. Through conversation with them, I said, I, I kind of convinced them, I thought that they were ending up with a better product if they had concrete, so we're able to alleviate that. Some, a couple of people are very adamant about the exposed aggregate, so it's probably on my shoulders as far as the he said, she said type thing, and, and we had to keep the project rolling, and so that's kind of how we've moved forward with it. And that reiterates back to the communication part that I talked about earlier with our project going forward, as long as I have anything to say about it, that we'll have open houses, so that when somebody comes, and we're going to do a street in front of your house, our standard is, is six foot of whatever it is, if it's concrete, that this is what we replace, and if you want something outside that scope, then that would be on you. And I just think that that was a, it really had more to do with communication than anything in itself, so. Yeah, we kind of had to make a decision on the fly a little bit on that, because they're there doing the work, and, and so that's kind of where that came from. So I would take ownership for maybe making the wrong decision on that, but the same token, I, I feel like the communication part was the letdown in the whole project, and a lot of that had to do with staff coming and going, and new people and stuff, so.
I'm just concerned if it happens again in the future, I mean, I, maybe there's just needs to clarify.
I can, I can honestly say, Audrey, I, that, that neighborhood is a unique neighborhood when it comes to driveways. You've got a lot more decorative driveways than you do in the normal residential areas, so I think it comes to the, the conversation of communicating what the standard is. And, and then, you know, I, I really think that that's what it is. I, I don't feel like it's a precedence, I think it's a circumstantial situation that we had to move forward with.
Councilmember, Osmus, followed by Councilmember Plowman.
Nope.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jared, do you know which, what percentage of this $57,800 was specifically regarding the exposed aggregate?
I believe it is approximately, well, it's 10,000 of the 57, so.
20%.
20%.
Roughly. Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, mayor, I was going to ask if the Ninth Street one had any exposed aggregate, if we were dealing with the same thing, and it was answered.
Thank you. Are we good? Just no questions or comments? Okay, we have a change order, consideration for change order number one, project number 2101B, Eagles Landing Drive East Reconstruct, and it's been motioned and seconded, and I will move that motion to roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
We have six ayes, two nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of project number 2110A, Downtown Sanitary Sewer Lining. It's a resolution approving change order number two, and I'll. It's a resolution approving change order number two, and I'll call on Jared for the explanation.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. This change order, ultimately, when the sanitary sewer lining project was completed, there was an additional four feet of pipe beyond the original estimated amount that needed to be lined. And ultimately, this is brought to you both because the quantity had been exceeded as part of the the original bid by four feet, but more importantly, the the project has been completed. And ultimately, after the adoption of the resolution, we'd also request the resolution that authorizes or accepts a project and authorizes final payment. So really, before you this evening, and and it was included in the packet, the original project budget was $215,514.20. Change order number one was 11-925. This change order that we're talking about this evening is $180 for a final contract amount of $208,027.50. So again, below the actual project budget associated with the improvement. So there are resolutions in the packet.
Motion to authorize change order number two for project 2110A.
Osmus, second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the project and authorize final payment.
Second, or motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Plowman. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me the opportunity to do something I haven't done in a while, flashback, highlighting a project where we are coming in, closing out under budget, appreciative of our engineering staff, as well as public works and all the other staff that worked on this project.
Just no comments or questions? So we have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve the project and authorize final payment. Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Jared, thank you for your work. We do appreciate it. Gary, you as well. Next, I'm going to move item number 10 forward one step to, out of consideration of our consultant. So if the council's okay with me taking that directive, I will. Otherwise, if you want to make a motion to allow that, that would be fine too. But otherwise, I think the mayor has the ability to move one spot, so.
That's fine.
Okay? We will consider project funding and approval for downtown street scape. With that, alert our city planner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Tonight, we have two resolutions to bring forward, both of which relate to our downtown street scape project. I've brought a, I brought a friend, Maddy Dahlheimer here, is here from Bolton &amp; Mink. She'll be presenting on one of them. So that first resolution that we're considering tonight regards funding for this project. And that will essentially authorize the use of $400,000 that we've received for this project. It'll authorize the use of that for what we're doing here. The second resolution will authorize Bolton &amp; Mink, who we've contracted to design this project, to proceed into the final design phase and the kind of final budgeting phase of this project. You'll get to see some of the preliminary designs that they've come up with and also sort of earlier, earlier iterations of it and how we've gotten here. So we'll sort of address these two resolutions respectively, and on the latter, I'll hand it off to Maddy.
For the council's information, it's page number 91, if you're looking for what page it is on our electronic version.
And while we're on the topic, I do understand that we we have some slides we need to get a chance to get loaded into. They're also in your packet. If we prefer, we are happy to, if we have them on a drive here, we're happy to upload those as well if council so prefers.
I think we have them in our laptops. That's fine.
Great. So on that, on that first item, so just as a refresher, so in 2019, the city received, replied for and received $400,000 to be put towards intersection improvement in downtown. Specifically, we sought that money to fund bump outs, which is a traffic feature where the curb protrudes into a parallel parking space for sidewalk improvements and for landscaping. So we applied for that back in 2019. In 2020, 21, in 2021, earlier this year, we really got the ball rolling. We contracted Bolton &amp; Mink to design that and kind of get going with that project. And they've come up with some, through public engagement, through consultation with staff, we've come up with some really interesting sort of preliminary designs. I don't want to step on Mayor's feet too much. I won't get into what those designs include too much, but that first item, sort of freeing up that money, that is what we're seeking for you tonight, just the resolution just formally authorizing us to use that. There is one item that we, staff would like to bring to council's attention. We do anticipate certain additional costs on the city's part that will be incurred as it relates to this project. That 400,000 comes from DED, that is the State Department of Economic Development. And in reviewing the preliminary budget included in this packet, there were concerns from DED, and there's not much information to offer at this time, there are concerns from DED that certain expenses in that budget either weren't related to those three items we had applied for, that is bump outs, sidewalk improvements, or landscaping, or that they were somehow, there were, there were costs that would be incidental to those improvements. So for example, if we were seeking to build bump outs and fund those bump outs for that 400, example of what might be covered under that 400 would be the concrete to actually extend the curb out. But if in extending that curb out, we also had to sort of navigate our sewers and getting new catch basin, it's our understanding that DED feels those costs are incidental rather than sort of implicit or inherent to that project. We are still, I mean, all in all, I anticipate this is just a minor hiccup, nothing, but it is significant enough that staff wanted to bring it to your attention. And I think our priority for right now is, is sort of getting a better understanding of DED's expectations and the rationale behind them. So we anticipate having further information on those extra costs quite soon. As far as the second resolution here goes, as I mentioned earlier, Bolton &amp; Mink has.
How about if we just take the first resolution first?
Sure.
And then we can go to the second after?
Sure.
Seems like they're, they're kind of disconnected a little bit.
Sure.
Does that make sense to you?
It does, yes.
So I look for a motion to approve a resolution approving the use of $400,000 received from the Small City Development Grant for downtown street scape improvements.
Osmus, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Osmus, second by whoever you want to grab there. I think there was two of them. I heard them all inside. So motion been made and seconded, discussion. Okay, this is a great project. I'm glad to see this come into fruition. I know that there's been a lot of work by staff to get this to this point, so with that, rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Now let's put a resolution number two.
So that that second resolution, Bolton &amp; Mink is seeking to advance to the final design phase of this project. They've drawn up some preliminary concepts that I think they'd, they'd like to show you tonight and ask for your permission to move forward. And with that, I'll hand it off to Maddy.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Members of Council. Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Maddy Dahlheimer, landscape architect with Bolton &amp; Mink. And I guess we'll, we'll dive right into the downtown street scape improvements. As Willard mentioned, the goal today is to kind of give a overview of the project and the process, where we've been, what we've heard from, from the community on this project, review the concepts that we've been developing through that process, get your feedback on those, and then get that green light to move into final design. Again, I'll also reiterate that what we have here are the concepts and that that final design phase is really where we work out all of those details, right? So whether that's specifically how we're constructing something, or as Willard mentioned, kind of working through those, working through those conversations with DED and the funding and how that grant money applies, that will be kind of covered in that final design phase. So you've got some visuals in your packets. My intent is to kind of run through this and provide some information. Feel free to interrupt me if you have a burning question or or want to get some clarification on something. So as mentioned, the the impetus for this project and this discussion tonight is that grant funding, funding that was awarded. Our work has been kind of split into a two-phase approach for the project. So the concept generation phase was the first phase, and that's really what we're going to talk about today. Second phase is the final design. That includes creating the construction documentations to get this built. We do have a timeline shown on your first page of, we're essentially at the end of that conceptual design phase and are ready and kind of need to get moving into final design because the other kind of asterisks on that grant funding is that there's an expiration date. So that money needs to be used for construction, and that expires, I believe, end of September 2022, right? So we will kind of look at these concepts, and once we kind of have a thumbs up on, yes, that's the right direction, we'll be able to develop those further into construction documents and use that funding before we can't use it anymore. So the goal with utilizing that funding in this project, in how we've kind of been discussing it in this current process, is identifying a catalyst project that we can really use that money towards for improvements and to kind of spark some reinvestment and re-excitement into downtown. So this project really provided an opportunity to explore what is the vision for downtown? What do people want it to look like? How do people want it to function? How can we shape the built environment to kind of support those desires? The other piece to note in our engagement is that, you know, we have it in kind of these two phases, but then we've also kind of looked at the downtown in two levels. So in our discussions with the community, we have asked broadly, what is your vision for downtown? How do you want it to feel and function? That's kind of a step one. And then with that, we've been asking at the same time, where in downtown do you think it would be most appropriate to apply these funds that we have, right? So we have a set amount, $400,000. That certainly isn't enough to redo an entire downtown, but we really wanted to use this process to have the community provide their input on, you know, where we should best kind of inject that, inject that, those improvements. So you'll see, I think it's on your third page, where we've been, it's titled Where We've Been and What We've Heard. We've had several different community engagement events, including a steering committee made up of some downtown business owners, council member, and other stakeholders, as well as a stakeholder meeting. We had a pop-up at the Fourth Street Block Party in July, and most recently had an open house in October. And kind of going through the feedback that we've heard, we've really gotten, we've kind of heard things in three broad themes, right? So looking at activation in downtown, so how can we activate the space with programming, place making, policy? How can we either create or support the identity of downtown? So looking at opportunities in the built environment to communicate the character of downtown. And then kind of a, a street scape and character type theme, which is really looking at how do we design the street scape and street scape amenities to support the desired use of downtown? All in all, the overwhelming response that we got was, how do we get more people downtown? How do we make downtown a place where people want to spend time? So from that feedback, we were able to explore kind of the broad vision of downtown and then look at how can we harness the funding that we have? So we kind of looked through the key feedback themes and what, you know, what can we actually influence with the built environment versus what are kind of some more policy items? Some things that kind of came to the top would be celebrating the unique cultural identity of downtown, using the built environment to commute, to communicate character, making an inclusive and welcoming downtown, improving accessibility. A big one was gathering or creating gathering and seating areas in downtown, and then really activating a downtown core, which from the community essentially has felt that it's Litchfield and along Litchfield and Fourth Street is kind of like the, the core area of downtown. So additionally, as I mentioned, we wanted to get some feedback on, on where we should apply these funds, and that core piece really came up. And that intersection of Litchfield and Fourth Street was kind of identified as like, hey, this is kind of like the central, the central node to downtown where everything is kind of spanning from. So I have the visual up that says intersection concept one. From all of this kind of visioning and exploring what we want to communicate, we developed two different concepts for that intersection at Litchfield and Fourth, where we could use this $400,000. And we brought those concepts to the open house to get feedback from the community on which pieces they liked, which maybe they didn't, and what we should continue pulling forward and pulling through in the design. So I wanted to take a minute to touch on similarities in the concepts, and then I can kind of touch on the differences in what people, what people were drawn to in each of them. But kind of the bones of the concepts were the same. So Willard mentioned that part of the grant funding was installing bump outs at the intersections. Bump outs do a lot of things. They give you a lot, they give you a lot of positive features, including narrowing the pedestrian crossing, right? So from getting, from one side of the street to the other is shorter if you're crossing the road. Also, by extending that curb out to the edge of the parallel parking, you're creating better visibility for both pedestrians and drivers, understanding who's, who needs to cross the street. When you kind of pinch down the road by bringing those curbs in, you naturally slow drivers down as well because as the road gets narrower, you're going to slow down. A specific kind of benefit for downtown Wilmer is that with those bump outs, we will be able to create or install pedestrian curb ramps that are kind of up to date, up to standards for, with the American with Disabilities Act requirements. Right now, everything's pretty tight, so it's hard to get those in there. So we'll be able to improve accessibility downtown. And then the other great benefit with bump outs is that you get some extra, you get some extra space that's, that's behind the curb, that's outside of the roadway. So in these designs, we have included bump outs at all four corners. The bump outs along Litchfield, we've actually extended the length of those. With the strong desire for the creation of kind of gathering areas downtown, we saw this as a really great opportunity to, to put those right here at the core. So those are kind of similarities. If you kind of follow the curb line shown on these concepts, that piece of it is the same. So where we have kind of the, the differences in the concepts is more so in the street scape elements and what kind of different aesthetic or creative amenities that we're adding to the, to the site. So this intersection concept one, we have some lighting across the road. We have seating areas, planting areas, as well as some opportunities to incorporate public art kind of with those, with those lighting elements that are crossing the road. If we look at the second concept, we explored how could we potentially even include some sort of structure on these gathering areas to really define them as a, as a place to come and gather, as well as including some incorporated lighting with that. With the second concept, we also explored how we could use the flat surface or the paved material to incorporate some of those more character elements. So looking at potentially sandblasting the concrete with a specific pattern to kind of communicate the character of the area. So from these two concepts, the things that really people were kind of drawn to and came to the top included that lighting across the roadway. We've got some imagery examples on these boards with that. Feedback being that that really creates a sense of arrival as if you were to go under those, or it kind of frames in that intersection and really creates. those or it kind of frames in that intersection and really creates kind of like a sense of place, as well as people were very drawn to the, the pavement treatments of the second concept of looking at opportunities on that flat surface of how can we incorporate something a bit unique and potentially a bit artistic on those areas. So if we kind of dive into this final intersection concept, what it includes are those bumpouts, the extended bumpouts with the gathering areas, seating areas with some planting beds. There are street trees included, site amenities, including seasonal planters, benches, bike racks, and then opportunities to incorporate some public art, both on the flat surface and then as well as on those poles for the lighting across the street. So lastly, what I'll point to is kind of our phase one implementation. So as Willard alluded to, when we got to our final concept plan, here's our vision for what this can be, our estimated costs were above the, the $400,000 grant limit. So we looked at, okay, so now what can we do? Do we need to scale something back to get under there, or are there pieces that we can install at a later date? So really, when we look at what can we install with that grant funding, we can really set up a, set up the base, set up the bones, get a lot of those improvements related to accessibility and traffic calming, as well as some of the pavement treatments with this kind of what we've called out here as phase one implementation. Things that would be identified as future installation or would require some alternative funding source would include the light, the poles and the lighting across the street, that sandblast pattern on the bumpouts themselves. So a standard concrete would be installed, and you could come back at a later date and put that sandblast pattern on there, as well as some of the, some of the landscape plantings, like the seasonal planters and kind of like the perennial items in the planting beds. Again, kind of looking at this concept and the funding that we have, we, we can construct it so that we get a lot of those improvements that we've talked about from those bumpouts and creating those gathering areas with the, within the funding that we've identified. Are there questions or comments on the concept?
So is there someone that would like to introduce the resolution authorizing Bolton to begin final design and budget?
So moved.
Second.
Most of them made in second. Councilmember O'Brien.
These gathering areas is, how many people are you thinking about in these gathering areas are you trying to bring in?
Yep. So if we look at, it should be the last, the last page in your packet, you can kind of see what we've included for benches. So we have two to three benches at each of those extended bumpout areas.
Okay.
So right, I mean, you can kind of anticipate if those were full, that's maybe six to nine people.
Okay.
Yep. But the, the other intent that we have with the design is that we could include a mountable curb along those bumpout areas so that, you know, if the city were to have a, an event similar to that Fourth Street Block Party that occurred, that you could essentially have that in this space without having kind of like a standard curb as a step in between. So I think we've got the gathering areas for kind of like day-to-day use, and then there, there is opportunity if the city, if the city is interested in, in using the space in a, in kind of a different way for special events.
Thank you. Councilmember Osmond.
Okay. On the lighting that zigzagging across the street.
Yep.
I saw there was a, a dot that said about consideration for truck traffic.
Yep.
And I was just wondering what your discussion had been about that in case being high enough so that something doesn't hook it? And was there a consideration to do like what Litchfield has right now is the stringing of the lights along the street from pole to pole?
So I included that note about the truck traffic only, or because it came up quite a bit at the open house. People, I mean, maybe similar to you, they saw and were like, huh, cars need to go under that. That's certainly something that when we're in final design and actually putting pen to paper on how to build this, we would make sure that trucks can go under that lighting without getting snagged, right? So similar to when we design a curb, we would consider what the turning movement for a truck is in designing the actual angle on the bumpouts. We would have similar considerations for anything going over the road to make sure vehicles can pass. And I'm not familiar with the example in Litchfield. Is it just going parallel to the curb?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Snow removal, who's going to be responsible for that now?
So the question is, Gary, maybe you can help us with this? Mr. Manzer.
Yeah, we've looked at this for snow removal, and I'd be lying to say, is it ideal for snow removal? No, it's not ideal. But the same token, we think it's such a great improvement to downtown that we'll make it, we'll get the snow out of there. It's not going to be a huge issue. I guess if anybody drove a snowplow head it the way they wanted, they would be, things would be a lot different, and that's just not the way we are.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson, followed by Fagerley.
Thank you. Is part of your work with the final design to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of the grant? Is that part of what we're looking at? And then I, I'm just reminded, I saw on the one sheet, I think, was this one grant that, I lost the page, that has the dates on it and the amount? Hang on. Here we go. Because there was another part of the grant for rental housing.
Yep. Do you want to speak to that?
Do they have to be completed at this? I mean, I know we ran into issues with our, our shelter to make sure we met the grant requirements, so I'm just trying to be proactive with what's the timeframe that we have to understand this has to be done by and it meets with the other part of the grant too?
Sure. So, so the recipient of the other part of that grant was, was the HRA and more specifically, Jill Banks. And we've been coordinating closely with Jill to make sure that we meet those deadlines that are clickable here, and namely that, that deadline is September of 2022. So yes, that's, that's absolutely consideration, and I don't think either camp has any concerns.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So have you been in discussion with the local municipal utilities because we're putting in new street lighting downtown?
Yes, absolutely. We have been coordinating with them on their timing for installation, as well as, I mean, I'm sure council's aware, we, we have been kind of spreading the word through our public engagement of what those lights will look like. So absolutely, we have, we've coordinated with them. Final design, we will look at if, so kind of the, the current plan from the utilities that they're replacing the lights one for one, right? So where there are, where there's a light today, they're going to put a new light in when they install these. So part of final design, we'll be working through where are the lights located at this intersection today, and do any of those footings for the lights need to be moved, considering we're, we're putting a bumpout in before those lights get installed.
Okay. And then another thing is, if you want to see a project like this, you can go like 18 miles to Lake Loli, and they just redid their main street, and it looks pretty impressive. So good luck.
Thanks.
Councilmember Ask, followed by Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love the project. It looks great. Looking forward to seeing it come into reality. Love the, the character that it'll bring downtown, which already has a good amount of character. But a lot of what I like is, is that ambiance stuff that's in phase two. So has there been any conversation about where we would get funding for phase two?
Do you want to take that one, Willard? I think, I think that's something that we'll explore, including with, or as part of final design. So I think part of our final design task is identifying, you know, making sure we're in line with the funding requirements and then figuring out what, what that will be applied towards, and then exploring what some other options are for, for getting some of these other elements installed at the same time potentially, or getting things kind of lined up so that, so that those future improvements happen, or those future phases
Right.
Kind of have a timeline on them.
I'd hate to see phase two never happen, I guess is what I'm saying, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
I just want to say that I, I love downtown, and I'm super excited for this project. I love the designs that you have here, and I also want to thank you and Willard for all the work that you've done, done some pretty good work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments or concerns? Councilmember Nelson.
This does not have a matching funding requirement, does it, from the city? And my, my reason for asking that is, were we planning on some funding in our next year's budget to subsidize this?
Do you want to speak to the in-kind?
We have a couple of leveraged projects and leveraged funds against this, namely the streetlights. That's the big one. And that'll take care of the vast majority, if not exceed our, our matching commitments. Yes. So answer your question.
I just was thinking there was some funding in the budget to help with this, or to complete this, or to be able to meet the requirements of the grant, I think. And you answered that.
Okay, okay.
Additional comments or questions? Again, from the mayor's office, I want to commend you for the engagement that you were really purposeful in doing that. I think of the gathering on Fourth Street and when you guys were there and how you were really engaging the community and getting people over there and getting the excitement flowing. And then a little bit of what happened also on September 11th, when you had your space also down at Park Downtown. And so thank you guys for that. Really do appreciate how you went out into the community to seek that input, and you received it once you went out to it. So it might be a model that we can replicate on how we get some civic engagement, other than just call the seven people we know and see what their opinion is. So, so thank you very much for that, for that leadership in doing that. So with that, a motion was made in second to authorize Bolton to begin final design and budget. Additional comments or questions before I call? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerley.
Aye.
ADAe, S U N E S.
That resolution passes. Thank you for your work. Thank you for traveling out, and safe travels on the way home. Look out for the deer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next wave of consideration, budget consideration for the current American Rescue Funds. Ms. Valiant, our city administrator, is going to present this piece.
Good evening, council. Tonight I have in front of you a plan to kind of earmark the first million dollars that the city has received. We have received $1,501,239. And this here would be a plan to earmark 1 million of that for turnout gear of 120,000, mobile radio units of 90,000, upgrading of our software system for administration. It would also be for Public Works and our building officials. So actually, it would be for all staff in that upgrade of software. And then upgrading the Epitopics water infrastructure, which is one of the, one of the few very, very definite programs that this funding can be used for. I had a short conversation late this afternoon with Doug Green from Baker Tilly, and he had seen our agenda, and he kind of was worried about the first three entities there as far as the turnout gear, the mobile phones, and the upgrade of software. Me, I don't have any angst with the upgrade of the software. I know that in infrastructure, technology, software, making things better for our staff to remotely work is one of the criteria. He was worried though mostly about the gear and the portable radios. So we can just keep them as that, but we would not be going into any contracts or anything until everything is fully vetted. And as far as, all of it actually, but we know infrastructure for sure is one that can be done. The one thing that I want to also check into on this as far as infrastructure is under our current construction projects. We have water sewer and storm under those projects also, and so I want to look to see if those would also be able to have as far as, if we could use those funding for any of our projects that are currently under consideration. So, so that's, my request is to just earmark this right now, the first million dollars to tag this as far as this goes. And then I, and then I have a second motion in there to enter in with Bergen KDV for planning and designing and helping us walk through our financial project software issues. So that would just be a contract up to $30,000, and it would probably, it would be very similar in nature to what you saw on the street projects where it would be first designing it and then payment of design bidding types or steps also. So it would not, until we get through the whole project, it's from start to finish. And then they would help us, they would help coordinate staff and all through the projects and through bringing in the new software and also making sure we have all of our policies up to date to, to go along with any new software systems that are related to the policy that we currently have in place.
Okay. So I think the first thing that, that you're asking is for some discussion in regards to the American Rescue Funds and the allocation of those?
Yes.
And so I don't believe that that really takes a motion, but you're just looking for direction from council of, are you headed the right direction, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does council have any discussions in regards to the American Rescue Funds? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I've listened to a couple of webinars on them, and communities are being pretty innovative with what they're looking at and how it will benefit the community in ADA, infrastructure. But also, the other thing I heard was very general to use, how the funds are going to be used, that you don't have to be real specific right now. And so I'm questioning the need to do a motion if we say we're going to do infrastructure, for example. Can we look at the best way to do that? I personally am really struggling with a half a million dollars for one business. I support that business. We made a commitment to do that. I think we have funds in the industrial park that could do that. I think there are other infrastructure needs in our community that we perhaps should be looking at to use this funds that would benefit more of the community. So I'm hearing about bike lanes and more ADA compliant, those types of things being done when you speak to that. I think the other thing that I'm hearing too is just a, a general, there's more money that's being allocated and kind of for cities to have the ability to wait to see what's coming from them in the transportation bill, what's coming in, you know, the other types of things so that we are using the money in the best, for the best for our community. So I'm surprised to hear that about the turnout gear because I do think that public health is, was something that was specific to that. I'm, you know, I guess I'm a little concerned, hopefully we're being created, creative enough to do things that really are going to benefit the whole community. But I would speak for sure against designating it to Epitopics. I know we need to do it, and I think we can use the money that we have for the industrial park for that and find something different with that one. So I'm not quite sure also, I think the mayor asked that question too. So I'm not quite sure also, I think the mayor asked that question too, if you're looking for direction, or are we making a commitment by approving this motion?
Well, there's not a motion on the table.
No, but she's asking for us to do that.
Asking.
Yeah, she's, she's looking for, for, you know, you spoke against it, the Epitopics piece, so maybe see if other councilors, I mean, did you, did you have ideas on what you wanted done with that money?
I, I'm supportive of doing infrastructure.
Such as what?
I think we have lots of things, that we, we just talked about street improvements and different types of things.
Can I, can I get an example? You're being very.
I am being.
This is, this is somewhat, I mean.
I'm being vague, because that's what other, I was telling you, that's what other communities are doing, they are looking, they're saying, we're going to use money on infrastructure, we're going to look, and I believe that Ms. Valiant already has said this, we don't need to make, we're not sending this anywhere, so I'm asking what we're, what kind of direction we're trying to give.
I would like, more specifically probably, that I think that we need to do the software upgrades no matter what, so it, as far as the rest of it, the turnout gear and the portable radios, Chief Hanson had told me that that was one that was allowable, and so that's what we had taken out of the CIP, was the 120 and the 90,000 that we had under the cash part of the CIPs for 2022, and I also know that we can work with the National League of Cities, and because they are saying also yes, that there are probably some grant opportunities there, and so we can further work with the league on that. As far as infrastructure, it could be possible that the infrastructure does, reconstruction does not count, and that's what we have, is all kinds of reconstruction, so if reconstruction doesn't count, then new construction of infrastructure would be the only thing, and I'm not aware of any new infrastructure except the Epitopics.
So ADA.
ADA compliance.
I've heard with that, that's obviously maybe a different term than infrastructure, but we have a lot of ADA requirements on our sidewalks and.
Yes, this is only, and, yeah, and this is only the first million, because I didn't, you know, until we get the other cash, I haven't, you know, talked about any more than that, we certainly can, there's still $51,000 of this, so we can look at ADA compliances and other additional corners that need to be done.
I, again, I, it's kind of like the project we just listened about, if there was a way to help fund some of those things with this money, I don't know, but I know that cities are working hard to be creative to what's in the best interest from, everything from new parks to new types of things that I've heard being commented on, and I don't know the right way, who can say yes or no to this, but I just think we may, we already voted to make a commitment to Epitopics to do it, so I just think we, we have an opportunity to do some other things here, I'd like to see us try to do that.
Okay, again, I'm going to ask, and do I, do I care about other cities? Yeah, I care about other cities, but it really frustrates me a lot when I want to do what another city did, but we don't bring any ideas.
I.
So I've asked for ideas, and all I get is empty, well, I listened to this webinar, and they said they're going to do something innovative.
I have three pages of notes from different counties, Rochester, different locations, I had hoped to meet with Leslie to share that with her at the beginning of the week, I did not know that that happened, so I can gladly share that with you, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it is out there, and I guess I'm just asking us to try to be a little, little bit more creative than just saying, we have a $500,000 bill, let's just spend it there and move on.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a little bit disappointing that the, the turnout gear and the radios for the, for the fire department maybe would not be considered, however, I, I do trust our legal advisors there, I trust Doug Green, I think they do a good job, they're well versed in what they do, so I would, at this time, I'd recommend probably following their recommendation. As far as the water line, I think maybe an, an argument could be made that, is it for one company, or is it an infrastructural expansion that could pertain to many areas potentially with regards to the future development of that, that end of town, but that's perhaps a discussion that needs to take place at a different time, but maybe the one thing that we could coalesce around is the idea that upgrading our software could help not only within the, the walls of City Hall, but also if we were to be kicked back into a position where, where employees are forced to work remotely, this can be a system that is more all encompassing, so it can, it can accomplish a number of different things, it can help streamline city functions, and also increase the ability to, of city staff to work more efficiently in multiple locations and stuff like that, and if that's something that is, you know, obviously, remote work, telework is a, was a big part of the pandemic, so I wouldn't think that that would be challenged at all, so that would be a part that, that I think that we could easily coalesce around, and maybe the other item slash items could be something that we could have more discussion on later, that would be my personal thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ask, followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to agree with Councilmember Plowman that I, I love the idea of upgrading our software, and I'm 100% supportive of that, and the benefit that that brings to really the whole city and all the departments and, and the citizens as well. I'm wondering, as far as infrastructure goes, would that be something that we could look at some stormwater projects around?
Mm-hmm, yes, stormwater would actually qualify.
Okay, that would be something that I would be supportive of for infrastructure, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I'm just speaking to give your direction, pretty much the same thing that Councilmember Plowman said, but a lot more brevity, with just saying, I think the Epitopics line is, has more benefit than just to one business, we definitely need the upgrade to the software, and hopefully we will find a grant for the, for the turnout gear and then the radios.
And we will continue looking, continue looking for grants also for the Epitopics, because there possibly could be other grants out there, so I'll be contacting the National League of Cities on that, and exploring more so on those things.
Okay, just a reminder on that Epitopics grant, you know, we got more money than we asked for.
Yes.
You know, we went out on a limb on that, asking for that grant, and then when they came back to us, they gave us additional funding, if, and they paid for 100% of the wastewater, with the understanding that we would pay for the water line, and so I don't want to do something that's going to jeopardize that grant.
Correct.
That we've already received, so, and I'm all about doing creative things, but I'm also all about planning and not planning at the council table, I think that planning needs to be done behind the scenes and, and brought together so that, that consensus can be built, so I think that's the way to do business, but that's just the mayor's opinion. Is there a direction then, that someone would like to make a motion to approve the administrator to work on the upgrade to the software?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signified by the same I?
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes, so you have one of your four items that you had presented to move forward, and then look for some other sources for those others, and I think you've got some good feedback as far as, and I know we talked about that a couple of different times at a couple of different meetings, that if you had something to bring it to you, and I know that there's been a lot of crickets on that, so hopefully this will spear some of that discussion, so we can make that happen. With that then goes to the next item, which the administrator's looking for, is a resolution to work with Bergen KDV to provide professional services for planning and financial software project management.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Ada, zero nays.
That resolution passes, Councilmember Fagerly had a comment to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so when does this money have to be spent? Is there a time?
2024.
2024, okay, so we got time.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you.
When does, when does the Epitopics line go in?
I don't think there was a date on that.
Well, there.
Jared is still working on the, Jared has to come back with the construction plans and such yet, so when, when Jared presents the construction plans on the design for the wastewater line and, water line, then we'll go from there, and hopefully I would think we'd want to try to go out for bids on that this early also, because we're, get our bid, best bidding in late January, first part of February, so I'd expect that we'll see that soon.
And, you know, they, they want to do a major expansion out there, and that's all contingent on us approving this, so, but yeah, Councilmember Nelson.
Did we not already pass a resolution, I remember Aaron Backman was here, where we agreed that we would pay, that we, we already agreed to it, so it, the question is where the money's going to come from, it is not whether we're going to do it or
Correct.
Yes.
Exactly.
Right, that's correct.
We're not jeopardizing.
No.
I'll just say that when, when this issue gets discussed at the council, I'm almost positive I will receive a phone call tomorrow, okay, I can almost guarantee it, based on the discussion tonight, so I, I can almost assure you that I'll, that I'll receive a phone call. Councilmember Nelson.
In, in light of that, I spoke in favor of it before, I am very supportive of Epitopics, I am talking about the money we're receiving from the federal level, using it for our community, so this is not against Epitopics, this is about how we, where the money comes from and how we spend it.
I'll leave my comments to myself on that, let me just say it's not the way it's proceeded, so, next we have rescind resolutions authorizing execution of contracts for both architectural engineering services and construction, construction manager at risk for the City Hall Community Center from March of 2020. Ms. Valiant.
Yes, in front of you is a resolution to rescind the 2020-042 and 2020-043 authorizing agreements with RJM Construction and BKV Group. RJM Construction was the construction manager at risk, and BKV Group is the architectural services, and this was to provide services for the construction of the new City Hall slash Community Center facility that council had planned on being built at the Community Center site, due to COVID, those contracts were put on hold, and at this time after our workshop and discussions over the last months here, I don't think that we're ready to move into that particular site and continue this agreement, so this is just to rescind those, and both have been contacted that we are not legally held to, since they were not actually fully executed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to rescind the resolutions number 2020-042 and 2020-043 authorizing agreements with RJM Construction and BKV Group for construction manager at risk and architectural services for a new City Hall Community Center, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ada, zero nays.
That resolution passes, next we have the November 2021 Work Session Staff Direction for City Hall and Community Center, Ms. Valiant.
Yes, this came from our workshop last week, and just to let you know, you'll be receiving further information on an overview of how that workshop went, along with the language of the mission statement and the vision that the council had talked about at the work session, also, all that will come to you at the next council meeting, it wasn't available at the time that this was put together, so I didn't want to include it on the last minute, so you'll get that, and we'll send that out for you to review. This here then is a part of that discussion that we had on the City Hall and the Community Center, and this would be to allow staff to start analyzing areas or sites that, that either the Community Center or the City Hall could be placed, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a joint building with Community Hall, Community Center, City Hall, it can be either or, and staff will take those into consideration as they review each site, and this then also is to allow staff to move into a professional services with a consultant, not to exceed $40,000, and those professional services then would help staff first review what our staff needs are, both for the City Hall and the Community Center, and to develop then what kind of building, a square footage, we would need for each specific building, and then also then from there, the professional services would provide, probably, would provide concepts for us, A, B, or C, hopefully just A and B, and then from there also provide potential cost on to those, and of course, we will certainly keep this, you know, we will be going out for these, we will send out requests to our various engineers within the city.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city administrator to request proposals for staff needs analysis for both City Hall and the Community Center, not to exceed $40,000, and direction to proceed with staff site analysis for both facilities.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I mentioned this to, at the work session, and I also mentioned it to Ms. Valiant before, I just want to, I, I don't know the correct way, when I read City Hall and Community Center, I think our community is looking for us, that that's one, and I think our discussion was very clear at the work session, that we want to look at the needs analysis for them separately, and so I'm just concerned if the, if something in the minutes or something in our action needs to make sure that we're reflecting the direction that we're asking to look at it individually, and then to look at options after that. I don't know if anybody else feels that way, but when I read it, I felt like if you didn't, if you weren't at the work session, you would think we were going the same direction where we were, so I don't know if there's an amendment, but I'm not sure how to word it.
Maybe a friendly amendment, when I read it, it says for both a City Hall and Community, you know, I think that's a sick, right, center's just not included there, it should have been, so I think for clarification, you could certainly ask the motioners if they'd be favorable to them to be either a standalone building or a combined building, whatever staff brought back, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
But that'd be up to you, how you'd want to word that.
Well, I, I think we were in agreement that we wanted to.
I mean, I think you want Community Center here, right?
I didn't look at that, I'm sorry.
I'm on, I wasn't like on page 160, and what I just said for the recommended action.
Yep.
It does say both City Hall and Community Center.
Doesn't say center in there, I mean, that's a.
Ours does, it does.
No, the resolution.
Oh, resolution does not, they missed the city under Community Center.
But I think we were very clear, we want them assessed separately.
So would you like.
We wanted to see them conceptually separate or together.
So I would propose that this whereas would say analysis for both a City Hall and Community. So I would propose that this whereas would say analysis for both a City Hall and/or Community Center. Does that make sense?
I think she's asking for three.
Okay.
She's asking for, aren't you?
City Hall, a Community Center, and/or both.
And then combined. Is that what you're asking?
Isn't that what we talked about?
Yep.
Was to have them done separately.
Yes.
And that we could come back with maybe four drawings, kind of concept.
Yeah, I was...
Or different locations.
Well, when I said drawing concepts, I meant two for City Hall, two for Community Center, and probably two, and we can, two for Community Center, City Hall, if the sites are agreeable to having both of them.
I don't know, maybe...
But that's...
Maybe Mr. Scott has a suggestion to it too, and maybe I'm overreading. I just know where people are at and what they're talking about is not what we talked about at the work session. I want to make sure we're clear with the direction that we're providing.
You say people talk, you're talking to the council, or are you talking about the community?
The community.
Ms. Valiant, you're understanding what Ms. Nelson, or Councilmember Nelson is stating, correct?
Yes.
So are there any council members who feel the same way, feel opposed to that, discussion in regards to that?
I'll make sure the planning director understands that too.
Yeah, that's what we talked about at the retreat, was City Hall, Community Center, and then at the end, we brought them both back together. That's how I remember the conversation going.
Options.
Options.
For us to see, yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Osmus.
I would just say that most of the people that I've been talking to about it, I've just been explaining that there's a possibility they would be two separate facilities unless there was a larger complex that made sense for both of them. But that they're aware they could be two separate.
Okay, just no comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion, a resolution authorizing us to proceed in this direction in a not-to-exceed expenditure of $40,000. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next on the agenda is community pride announcements, and I've got a couple that I'd like to start with, and then if council wishes to add some, certainly would be willing to look at that. Just want to commend John Lindstrom for his project that he did down at the Wilmer Auditorium. I know normally that would have, I think, lasted a longer period of time than it did this year. It actually, with Veterans Day following on Thursday, you know, he kind of put his project together and then kind of took it down. I know that this has been in front of the council numerous different times where this has been discussed, but I really think that that project that he has there, I mean, that's a gem. That is a gem for Candy White County, it's a gem for the city of Wilmer. And I know that he has asked numerous times, Councilmember Doc and I know worked extensively, former Councilmember Doc, and worked extensively in trying to find a location for him. I would encourage the council to consider maybe trying to coalesce around something where we could get a group of people to talk about that, but that's not for tonight. That's just, I want to give John a kudos. I know that he has been courted by people not only within the state of Minnesota, but also people outside of the state of Minnesota to take his display, and I think that'd be a huge loss for Wilmer if we lost that. John has done that here for a number of years, and you know, we've been very accommodating for him on that. So just, John, thank you for your work. John, as most of you know, is the mayor of Candy White. Also, I want to give a big shout out to Ridgewater College. Ridgewater is reinstituting their sports programs and their volleyball season, they had a wonderful season this year, had a successful run at it. And when they ran into the semifinals in the playoffs, they ran into a little trouble at the regions and a couple balls didn't land the way they'd hoped they would have landed, or they would have moved on to state. And then wrestling just recently started, I believe they had their first meet last week, and their wrestling team is doing well as well. For those of you that have followed Ridgewater Sports, Ridgewater has been a contender in wrestling and volleyball, and actually in volleyball, has been national leaders many, many, many years under the coaching of Val Swanson. And so she's done a great job. So just a kudos to Ridgewater and their sports programs out there. And then also, we've got to talk about our Wilmer High School. Again, their football program, the soccer programs, they did great this year, but the play this past weekend, the musical Footloose, I have heard so many positive comments about the Footloose production. My wife and I were unable to attend it, but I believe the ticket sold out, but we were unable to attend it. And the interesting piece about that, and probably not a lot of people realize it, is that Wilmer was doing it at the same time that New London was doing, the exact same production. And so, but I've heard some really great things about the Footloose program here in Wilmer, so hats off to the theater group out at the college, out at the high school. And then we have Celebrate the Light of the World, and that project is, they're getting that set up. Mr. Manzer talked a little bit about that today as he was talking about the project, he said we're going, hoping we get the electrical done for that project. But again, you know, something that we put, that the council took action and then gave that to Wilmerfest to basically drive the bus on that. So again, look forward to the lighting ceremony the day after Thanksgiving, I'm sorry, Thanksgiving evening, and we'll do the lighting ceremony that evening. So really some great things happening in Wilmer. Wilmer's a great place to live, work, and play, and raise your grandchildren, as I like to add to the end of that. So council, anything else that you'd like to add? Councilmember O'Brien.
I'd just like to mention, this is sad and also very, very, very prideful. One of the officers that I had opportunity as a law enforcement officer to work with for many years, passed away this morning, Rick James. I just want to say that I'm so prideful of all the work he did for our community and opportunity to work with him a lot. And I just send condolences to Rita and the family and all our brother and sister officers as well.
Sure, sure. Anybody else have any comments to make? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We adjourn.[1793.71]